All right, we will go ahead and call to order the Wednesday December eighteenth, twenty twenty four. City Solon Raider, City Council meeting. That will start with pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. To the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Here, Farley, here, Gabriel, and Kramer?
Yeah.
Here.
Oh, I didn't see on there.
Sorry.
Our civility pledge, we pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, and acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community. Looking to perfect and approve your agenda, uh, any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
And we'll move to perfect and approve the meeting.
Duncan?
Yes.
Farley?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Uh, citizens speak, this is the time for anybody, uh, that would like to speak on a non-agenda item tonight. Tony?
I, I did see, um, several places that the utility committee was discussing utility forgiveness, utility forgiveness for G A W. And I wanted to ask, it'll be eight years coming up July twenty twenty five, which became an issue that's still an issue in town's interest here. And I'm hoping that Chris Upset is listening somewhere, because I'd like to see a really, um, depth in that. Study and analysis and comments from people eight years into this, because this was an issue that was statewide interest and do a few national, um, uh, water environmental groups. This is a water in the future for rural development, an issue that came on our front porch. And seeing that now they're talking about utility forgiveness, it's a good time to bring the issue forward and say, a lot of people in town are still very interested. And any, any information, we would like to see in the newspaper article ideally or presented here. Cammy's done an excellent job in bringing forward information about the, uh, water treatment and the sewer plant and so forth, that might be a possibility. But a quick history, past one to the president, where suddenly we read about utility forgiveness, which was never our understanding. And we would like to know, one, two, three, what is Gallery Acres West paying per gallon of water? Are they paying what we're paying? Are their rates going up as are ours? I'm sure that they're not paying any sewer, um, which is, that's why we wanted our water for taxpayers, residents, that that comes as a part of it. What are they paying for flushing? How much water is being flushed? And I know now, I've lost track because the city's been involved with Watts and the pipe is, got various owners, the various accountabilities and so forth. All of that could be very quickly condensed in one, two, three, so the community understands it, because I promise you, you will get public input. Um, that comes forward that things aren't as we had understood in terms of who's paying what, especially, and I'm sure you understand. The water rates are going up and the sewer, uh, uh, everything is going up, the cost of everything, and so people are, um, understandably questioning, um. I've also heard that project, the right point is going on, and I have here. These are all Kyle Goldman's emails in twenty sixteen, and this came before the console, uh, July of twenty seventeen, as, um, you know, new information, and going on for a year and a half, if not longer. And he's at this time, got five homes built out there, four more in the works, and he says here in August of twenty sixteen, we're looking at thirty-four homes. So this was all being done before the fact, they knew they had arsenic in the water, and they're talking about hooking up the Solon. Long story short, fast forward, here we are. And the question is, to be clear, town wasn't happy about giving our water away to people that weren't part of the community, because water is no longer guaranteed. We're not saying there's any emergencies, but we're dry again. The whole world is looking at water differently, and solely due because of G A W. People learned a lot and got involved, and I think that's wonderful, we should be proud of it. And they're here to ask questions and hold accountability. And if we're not gonna hook up the J R to the right point, I understand both through G A W, but the question is, how many gallons? What are we obligated for? For how long? And how much are they gonna pay? And we want to make sure what this utility forgiveness is, I'm sure it's no big deal. But if it is, you're gonna hear from people, I think as you would expect to, this is now what we were told when this all came about. So, thank you very much, and I wanted to thank Cammy, you're making a real effort, promoting the public and the economy. It's appreciated and it's hard to understand someone like me, but we can work through it. And we know more than we did before, and that's the, the essence of good government. And the last thing I wanted to quickly ask, and only three minutes are left, uh, but with your utilities committee, the two members, um, were, have been part of three preceding councils that approved and debated and so forth, the Gallery Acres West. It's my personal opinion, nothing personal about either complement, I think you need a, 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 a person who has not been a part of this and voted for it and so forth, that you needed, uh, 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 somebody different than, um, uh, Lauren and, and Mr. Donigan respectfully. Because this is an issue that could explode at any time. We don't know what the next couple of years are going to be in terms of water, communities around us start needing water. We want to know how much water we have, and we want to take care of it and hang on to it, and not be giving it away to accommodate the failures
Tony.
of, of Goldman and the D N R and the Jonathan County Supervisors to require potable water before you rubber stamp.
Tony.
Thank you.
Yes, we understand.
All the days are going on.
Uh, and just, uh, a couple of comments on that, as far as utility forgiveness, that's, anybody in town can request, uh, forgiveness if they have, uh, running toilet there.
Yes.
watering guard, things like that, so there's no automatic connection
No, but this is just the heads off that we're aware of.
Any connection or anybody else connecting to the line, and, uh, Cam, you're something, come wrong on that. It would have to come back to us before anybody else
I understand.
could be connected on that, so, I just wanted to give you those responses now.
Yeah.
Um, with that, but we will take your other comments, uh, in consideration.
It would be helpful in the paper to know what everybody's paying and they're paying for flushing, because we don't want to be paying for it.
Yeah, we, we heard you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on anything? All right, uh, next that takes us down to the consent agenda, that would be the approval of the minutes from the December fourth, twenty twenty four meeting. Approval of the list of bills, the treasures report and transfers, building permits, which we have, uh, quite a few on there, as well as the board commission appointments. I have a reappointment of Kathy Nasca for the K Z Commission.
I'll move to, uh, for the consent agenda.
I'll second. Duncan?
Yes.
Farley?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yeah.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Takes us down to the Public Works Director Report, Scott?
I don't, there we go.
All right.
Shortens.
We have a lot of eyes.
Yeah.
Is Bea on the line tonight?
Bea is on, yes.
All right, next we have Johnson Supervisor, we fix for, all right.
Good evening, yeah, thank you. Um, I hope everybody's staying warm out there. Um, we pretty much at the board are just heading into our, uh, long budget season. Um, we had a report from our finance director, I think it was Monday. Um, honestly, it, it feels like two weeks and one week, uh, that we should be looking at numbers getting back to us, uh, early January. So we'll kind of have a sense of what our overall budget numbers will look like and what we can, um, what we can, you know, expect to utilize over the next fiscal year. Um, I think everybody's pretty aware about some of the tightening of budget that is going to be happening. Um, there, we're just, there's some uncertainty as to what the state legislature might do in terms of changing things, much like they did last year. Uh, so we're hopeful that they kind of just stay the course and we can continue to do what we're doing right now. Um, so if there's any, you know, questions about the budget process or how we're working through things, I'm happy to answer those. Uh, we pretty much take it department by department. Um, we had secondary roads given update today as well. Um, and also wanted to say that we have a new supervisor coming on in January, Mandy Remington. And so we've reconfigured our, uh, committee assignments, and Rod Sullivan will be stepping in, um, to be your liaison here. And, um, that was kind of finalized today, so I know he's no stranger to Solon, and, um, look forward to, you know, continuing to, to partner together. I know you all have got a lot going on, and it's been honestly a real pleasure to work with you all and, and listen to what's going on in Solon and, and see how we can help. Um, I know it's been kind of a little bit of a tumultuous, like, budget season with, you know, the, the state legislature last year. Um, but, you know, we're, we're in it together, um, and I know we've got a lot of projects together, so. Uh, happy to answer any questions or, or take anything back from the board, um, as always, and, yeah. There's anything for me?
All right, well, appreciate the support over, uh, with, training, with, from you with the transitioning over to Rod as our liaison. And I think since we, uh, had you last as well, we had our sheriff's contract agreement come through as well, so appreciate the support from supervisors on that.
Absolutely, yep. All right, well, uh, yeah, I hope everybody has a good holiday season.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us down to new business, uh, number ten, change of use for priorage bikes, Kim?
Yeah, this is, um, a late, last minute add to the agenda, uh, right before the cutoff. Um, we learned that, um, priorage bikes is going to be relocating, they'll be staying in Solon. Um, we're thankful for that, but they are going to be moving into the location known as Elisa's, um, Sirius Pet Styling over on Dubuque Street, the building's owned by Neil Arusha, and, um, uh, Alex is here. And, uh, so we don't really have, um, a really formal presentation since it was last minute, but, you know, he wasn't really understanding the, the requirement of city council approval, and I explained to Alex is that why that's important is because if there's a, a business in there that, um, you know, the, the, the neighborhood's used to certain hours, certain parking, certain noise, certain delivery. And so when a business changes, the act of, the change of the use, uh, procedure is, um, to just help address any concerns that a different business may have, you know, versus the existing business. So we talked a little bit, Alex, feel free to kind of share the dynamics of what you expect in the new location.
Yeah, I, I don't see any, uh, really change to the area as far as hours or anything like that. Uh, we just need a little bit more space, there's a little garage door in the back for being able to kind of load, unload things. We might be able to, uh, expand and then help more people in the community and then surrounding communities as well. So it's just a good opportunity to then increase our, uh, coverage of the area, so. Besides, an extra thousand square feet, figure we might as well grow a little bit, help people a little bit more.
So, yeah, that's gonna add quite a bit for you guys, space wise.
Yeah, we were running out of space, we've been, we've been pretty tight in there for the last four years, and they always say you need more space in a bike shop, and we need some more backend space for the clutter and stuff like that, so it'll be, it'll be nice once we, uh, it'll probably be pretty bare bones as far as the build out initially, we're just gonna use what's already there from, I think the initial brewery that was there one years ago or so, um, and so we're gonna use most of the original stuff, and then we'll just kind of, you know, get permits and stuff according and knock some wall down later on. But it'll be, uh, it'll be a good change for sure. Well, we appreciate having you on, that's an awesome service to have that we didn't have before. We're looking to stick around, we're here, we're here to stay. Awesome, well, best of luck with the movie, it'll be a very nice.
Good problem to have, they need more space.
Yeah.
Is there an action that we need to take?
So, yes, we will do a change of use approval, I just wanted to highlight some of the things that we look at when a change of use is parking. There's street parking now, there, there's street parking where they're relocating. Hours are going to be similar to the hours they currently have, which are similar to the hours of the previous business that was there. And, um, there are no, like, semi deliveries. Um, expected noise, I think, is going to be probably required, because they were boarding dogs over there. I don't think you're gonna be boarding dogs, so I think as far as impact to the neighborhood, it is gonna be minimal and probably very, uh, comparable to the business that just vacated.
Great.
So I don't really have any concerns.
Do we have a motion for an approval for the change of use?
I'll move to approve the change of use.
I'll second.
Way to choose, Rob. Uh, Duncan?
Yes.
So Farley?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yeah.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
All right, uh, takes us to item number eleven, that list of bills. Kim?
Uh, so because we are going to be pushing the, um, the first council meeting in January to January eighth, we, um, are requesting council permission to go ahead and pay bills on schedule in January. Um, and this is just a formal approval allowing us to do that. So the first meeting in January would be January eighth, the second regular council meeting, um, will be January fifteenth. Any other January meetings will be special meetings related to the budget. We'll also be kind of combining regular council meetings with some budget information, so please plan on meetings every Gi, every Wednesday in January at this time, that may change a little bit as we get, as we get into things, but plan on it for now. And this allows us to just go ahead and keep bills on schedule.
From a bill statement, anything unusual or anything to expect for the coming up before then, or just kind of our usual start of the month?
These are just, these are just bills are on a cycle, and we have first bills of the month and then second bills, and so, um, it's gonna save us a lot of calls, like, why haven't we gotten paid? And it's just gonna keep things on at least.
Uh, and be on a motion to approve approval, uh, to be paid on schedule?
I'll move to, uh, provide, uh, me to give those.
All right, Duncan?
Yes.
Farley?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Right, uh, takes us to item number twelve, wastewater treatment facility information video.
So, um, wanted to, uh, give, uh, our first preview here of our, um, video, we have done, as Tony mentioned, we've done a lot of, uh, public education on the need for the new wastewater treatment facility. We've done that through a series of articles in the newspaper last summer, and we, um, our next approach is to, um, uh, do a, you know, kind of some live action, so, um, we were able to, um, get some local talent to help us with some drone coverage. Scott's been hard at work creating a, a video that we're gonna release here, um, to the public, and we wanted to give this group the first look at it. And so there will be more as, as we get through the process, but our goal is just to keep steady, relevant information. We know it's a long process with this sewer plant, so if we can keep, you know, steady information in front of the public, we hope to, you know, educate and just, um, really keep every, be really transparent in the process, which is our goal. So can we just, here, just see if this is gonna work? It's about five minutes. I don't have permission from Dropbox to get this little. We did a practice run and it worked really well. Same, yeah. Just for a minute, I'm gonna reload that. We're not trying to do it. I'm ready to download it. Again, from Dropbox. Okay, so now I think it's gonna work. Okay, so now I have to go back to Zoom and share this. At all? Okay.
You're not sharing?
I know, I know, just started right away. Got all this new. There's still one. Oh, now we're gonna start. Hey, I'm not sure if there's audio, but it's not coming through on Zoom.
Jeff, Scott?
Yeah, thanks for putting that together, I think it's helpful, especially if you have eyes on it as we discuss, and we've, we've discussed being landlocked. Ariel definitely support that as well with it, uh, I think it'll just be helpful learning more about the treatment process in general. That's awesome, thank you for taking the time to put that together.
Right, well, Scott done most of the work, and we can now add producer, editor, narrator to his long list of abilities and talents, so.
What can that guy do?
No, I know.
He can't admit.
I know, but when will it be released and how will it be released? Will it be on TV or is it going to be done like over the library in the evenings so the citizens can be invited to come see it? We're gonna have it on the city website, so anybody can go see it at any time, they just click on it.
I was thinking that maybe if you had a special meeting, because they're, they're likely concerned with, uh, traffic, odor, noise, whatever. That, uh, maybe there is a meeting with the council or, or Scott at the library, it'd be a good way to, you know, use the library facilities there. You have a, have a meeting for the, uh, the residents of Solon.
We plan to do more videos that, that they'll, gets deeper into the treatment process, uh, where we're gonna be answering a lot of that stuff. Will there be any more public hearings that we have on along the process, where we could speak to anymore, I know that we've talked to quite a bit in depth here, or in previous council meetings as well, or deserve more to come, as well as far as utilizing meetings that would be scheduled already?
So right now we have monthly updates on the city council agenda. Uh, and again, we've done the, the, the series in the newspaper and now the video. We are, there's gonna be public hearings throughout the process. They're gonna be a ways down the line when we get into the actual, um, bidding process and the bonding process. We hope that these, um, we're trying to look at multiple educational, um, avenues. Um, so we'll certainly take into consideration doing some informational sessions as part of that.
Uh, that takes us down to other business, the council committees, uh, with the streets, any update from last meeting, Cam?
Um, we did, we did, um, get an agreement from, um, the city attorney, um, that provides that. It's an option agreement that allows the city to go in, go onto private property and do some survey at the request of the resident. So that's, um, and it's still in, in, uh, a survey hasn't begun yet, but once that gets signed, then that agreement will come back to council probably in January. Um, do you have a key call?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, utilities, uh, committee. Um, there is no current utility forgiveness request out there, I should have taken that off, I did not. Um, the latest with Gallery Acres West was, um, Scott, Dave and I met with them, um, last week, and they're just, uh, they're just, they just still have some research to do. McBride Point approached Gallery Acres to hook on, but they're still, they just still have, they're just not quite ready, they're not sure exactly what they need. And, um, they know that Scott and Dave and I are available as a resource, so once they get their plan a little more solid, then I'll, I'll share another update. It was just that preliminary, um, meeting just to start the conversation. Um, we did, we did, um, get an agreement from, um, the city attorney, um, that provides that. It's an option agreement that allows the city to go in, go onto private property and do some survey at the request of the resident. So that's, um, and it's still in, in, uh, a survey hasn't begun yet, but it, once that gets signed, then that agreement will come back to council probably in January. Um. Do you have a key call?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, utilities, uh, committee. Um, there is no current utility forgiveness request out there. I should have taken that off. I did not. Um, the latest with Gallery Acres West was, um. Scott, Dave and I met with them, um, last week and they're just, uh, they're just, they, they just still have some research to do. McBride Point approached Gallery Acres to hook on, but they're still, they just still have, they're just not quite ready. They're not sure exactly what they need and, um, they know that Scott and Dave and I are available as a resource. So once they get their plan a little more solid, then I'll, I'll share another update. It was just that preliminary, um, meeting just to start the conversation. And then the long-term debt review for the finance committee, um, I'm working with Heidi Kuhl, um, on our, to update our long-term debt plan. We hope to meet with the finance committee early January and then full council mid-January, right where we're into the throes of budget. Uh, personnel committee is meeting after this meeting briefly. And then, um, as far as the building growth, um, J C C church annexation. We've gotten some preliminary, um, uh, exhibits of possible annexation. Uh, we've, Scott and, Scott and Dave and I are still just in the process of reviewing those and providing feedback. Um, J C C has provided a concept, so that's part of what we're taking into consideration. Um, again, that, nothing formal on those. There's just still ongoing conversations and there is progress keeping, um, that, that keeps moving that, that forward. Um, no police committee update and then S R N A draft review. I heard back from Davis and he has proposed a date for right after Christmas. And I'm in the process of, uh, reaching out to everybody to see if that date will work. Uh, if not, we'll have to look at the January a little bit, but things are all moving.
All right.
So good progress.
All right, thanks for all those updates. Uh, city clerk reporting, Susan. Uh, Kami, you need to city's ministry comments?
Uh, I just wanted to remind everybody that the garbage schedule and recycling schedule will be off by one day here heading into the holidays.
Now it'll be each of the next two weeks.
So Christmas weekend, New Year's week, yeah.
Uh, any council comments?
I just want to say nice, nice job of getting out there and getting the streets taken care of, um.
Yeah, they did a nice job.
This, this is a good portion, but, uh, I know they, I know they put some, some long hours in, so we appreciate you guys getting out there and, and, uh, making everything look good.
Thank you.
Any other council comments?
All right, great working with everyone for, for the past year and I hope everyone had a great holiday and New Year's. Yeah.
All right, mayor comments? Just wanted to jump on that. I was leaving town before seven this morning, Scott, to get, we didn't have much snow this morning. They had a dusting. But seeing the guys out and appreciate just the flexibility, the availability, everything, uh, with that. It's, I think every year we'd say that our, our town takes care of their streets, you know, it's, it's second to none with that. So appreciate all, all the work and the hours that you guys put in with that. Uh, and also with, uh, as far as closings, uh, Kim, the city offices will be closed, uh, New Year, or Christmas Eve, Christmas Day.
And.
And New Year's Day, um, as well. So just wanted to get that out there. With this, hopefully, of course, if everybody enjoys the holidays, a little bit of extra time off as well. With that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Say it. Paul and John?
One, one way or the other.
All right, all in favor, say hi?
Hi, hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? All right, that meeting is adjourned?